Good evening. Welcome to the Orange County School Board's regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. It's always so much fun to see the boardroom full. I'm gonna call a quick roll call. I know we have Member Salamanca is not here tonight. Member Ferrant.
Good evening.
Member Douglas.
Good evening.
Member Vanos.
I'm here.
Member Gallo.
Good evening.
Member Felder.
Good evening.
And I believe we have Chair Jacobs on the line telephonically. Chair Jacobs, are you there?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public, when speaking, please make sure that your microphone is turned on and that you speak directly into it so that our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you so much for participating or attending tonight's board meeting. We're gonna start with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Vice Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Wonderful. Good evening again to everyone that's here tonight. We are joined this evening by a group of students from Dr. Phillips High School. They are among a cross-section of our students who work with our superintendent all school year to provide her with valuable insights. DP has also brought a group of dancers who are going to perform after their presentation. We're very excited for that, too. Superintendent Vasquez, can you please introduce your students?
Madam Chair, before you do that, you all need to move to adopt the agenda.
My apologies. I thought that that was only for the amended agenda, if there was an amended agenda. My apologies. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved by Member Ferrant, seconded by Member Douglas. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Vasquez, would you please introduce your students?
Oh, I am super excited for you to hear members of my student advisory council. They are amazing young men and women, and I know you will feel the same after you hear from them. So this evening, we have Adam Fatale, we have Zenaya Allen, we have Katerina Carlson, Alejandro Valdez, Andre Roche. Did I say that correctly, Andre? Great. Take it away.
Hello. It's an absolute pleasure to be in here. My name is Adam Fatale, and we are students from Dr. Phillips High School, where we are never less than the best. This is Zenaya, this is Zenaya Allen, Katerina Carlson, and Andre Roche. They will tell you a little bit more about themselves in a few minutes. It's been an amazing experience working on the superintendent's stress management project. I came from a country where education lacked a committee or a group to represent the students' interests and concerns like this one. As students' concerns were not being addressed and expressed, the country's resources towards education were not being used to the fullest. As a result, the education wasn't the best, and no changes were made to the system. It's also evident that bad mental health can cause many problems in every aspect of our students' lives. That is why our goal in this committee and in this initiative, to help students rise up, speak up, and seek help for their problems and struggles, and make use of the funds and resources that we have available to create a better place for all. Because with a healthy mind comes a healthy society that can empower the idea of seeking help when you're in the dark or simply just need someone to talk to. My initiative was to create a website that puts all of our mental health resources together in order to educate and inform our students, teachers, faculty, and staff of the available resources that we have at our school. So our parents and students know where to go when they need help or want to know what is going on around the school in terms of mental health. I was able to meet with our mental health counselors and other staff who serve our students on a daily basis. This initiative helps to spread awareness and information about useful mental health resources as acts like a hub of information that people can go to and use in a private and an easy way. They can send and suggest changes to the school's and its procedures. Visitors can also see our superintendent student advisory council archive meetings, current projects, and clear information about our social workers and mental health counselors at the school. Now to the third, to the second initiative. Alejandro Valdez has advanced to his finals in rock climbing competition today, so he's unfortunately unavailable to attend. His initiative is Panther Pairs, where juniors and seniors who already have taken in past Advanced Placement courses are paired with freshmen and sophomores to support them in their courses. Alejandro created this program to boost attendance, academic performance, and engagement by providing targeted support for students with low grades and/or poor attendance. This initiative fosters a positive cycle of support, encouraging mentors to stay engaged and giving a mentees a sense of belonging and purpose. It also builds school, school pride and strength community ties. These efforts extend beyond the classroom because our teams host sessions at various local checkpoints and libraries, allowing flexible, allowing flexibility for families to attend at convenient times and locations. By involving public libraries, this initiative unites the community and offers an inclusive, stigma-free, where families can access essential information and support. It is now my pleasure to introduce Zenaya Allen.
Hi, my name is Zenaya Allen, and I was in charge of the third initiative, Resiliency Summits for our school. When I first took on this role, I had big plans I wanted to bring in professional to give students a fresh perspective on life and the future. Sounds great, right? Well, it didn't turn out how it was expected. Turns out, students weren't interested in sitting in another lecture. Who knew? So I had to rethink my approach. I asked myself, how can I actually get through to students? And then it hit me. Students listened to other students. Instead of bringing in speakers, we decided to have our own students, leaders, club, and organizations, especially me, to change. For the last eight resiliency summits, we created presentations during lunch to address real-life topics students actually cared about, such as life during and after high school, the stuff nobody tells you about but you need to know. And guess what? It worked. We ended up having to run this session twice because students kept showing up. Every time, we learned something new and what they needed to hear. After that success, we moved on to mental health. Well, excuse me, mental wellness. Doesn't that sound so much professional? We realized that while this school provided resources, a lot of students tune out whatever they hear when they hear the word "mental health." They'd rather scroll on their phones or, dare I say, do schoolwork through these generic videos of stress. So we met with their level. We made mental wellness interactive and engaging. Between March 24th and 28th, we hosted Mental Wellness Week to break down important topics like overthinking. Because let's be real, school is a big place for overthinking, anxiety, what it's like, how to manage it, and most importantly, how to know when to get help, self-esteem. Because whether you're tall, short, thin, or thick, or in between, you are ready enough. By the end of the week, we didn't just talk, we gave students useful tools. My friend Brianna even designed little cards with school resources, encouraged students to keep journals to track their emotions or thoughts or goals. Wasn't just to talk about mental wellness, it was to make sure students knew where to turn when they needed help. Next, we collaborated with our Girls in Christ to bring positive, positive ways to the campus. We wrote uplifting notes and posted them all around the school because sometimes it's just a simple message like, you are amazing and you are enough to change. To see that, to brighten up everyone's day, was the most priceless thing in the world. Then came one of my favorite initiatives, upperclassmen mentoring underclassmen. Let's be honest, senior year is not easy, as we thought it would be. Between college applications, scholarships, and extracurriculars, I found myself wondering, why didn't anyone warn me? So we made sure to make a change for the next class. With help from BSU, CSA, and Girls in Christ, we hosted Q&amp;A sessions during lunch and after school to answer questions on underclassmen and had, wow, did that really have a lot of questions? Turns out, they are just as lost as we were back then. We even managed to get food because let's be for real, these kids ain't coming to nothing if it ain't food there. Thanks. Thanks to our amazing donors, we were able to make these sessions not just educational, but enjoyable. Now, I'd like to, the pleasure to introduce you to Katerina Carlson.
Hello. My name is Katerina Carlson. I'm a senior in the TV Film Magnet, and I will be presenting the many different programs our school has to offer. Here's a brief look into student life. I'm going from left to right in order of the photos. We've got group projects, our senior sunrise, pep rallies, that photo right there of the green screen, I took that one. It's from when my friends and I, in my film program, we got to volunteer at Orange TV news station, which I know is connected to this. Football games, a great place for students to make friends and really get into the school spirit, and our CIS Study Abroad Program. At Dr. Phillips High School, we don't just prepare students for college, we prepare them for the world. Our Center for International Studies is a gateway to global citizenship, where students gain hands-on understanding of cultural, historical, and humanitarian issues. Whether it's participating in the Holocaust journey or collaborating on projects that promote global sustainability, CIS students experience learning far beyond the classroom. It's not just a program, it's a life-changing passport to perspective, purpose, and impact. CIS also opens doors to international emergent. Through our Study Abroad exchanges to countries like Denmark and Japan, which is what our photos are from, students not only visit, but live, learn, and engage in communities halfway around the world. These experiences build empathy, adaptability, and confidence, skills that no textbook can fully teach. The friendships formed, cultures experienced, and lessons learned transform how students see themselves and their place in the world. It's global education at its best, and it's happening right here at Dr. Phillips. As a matter of fact, the Danish students are with us here in Orlando this week and staying with families. And while our global outlook is strong, our commitment to innovation at home is just as powerful. Our robotics program is a shining example of student-led achievement, from building advanced robots and competing in tournaments to designing rockets that launch into the sky. Our students are pushing the boundaries of STEM. They're not just building machines, they're building futures. Every student in this program leaves with real-world skills in engineering, programming, and leadership. This is where passion meets precision and where Dr. Phillips students become tomorrow's inventors. And now back to Zenaya.
Dr. Phillips athletics have been incredible this year. Our football team made it to the final four showcasing their talent and determination. Our girls' basketball team, already three-time champs, found hard, found it hard to fall, but finally reached the final two this year. Meanwhile, our Boys and Girls Water Polo Team are currently pursuing the state finals, proving their dedication and skills. We are incredibly proud of our student athletes and their hard work and commitment. As a leader in BSU and Girls in Christ, I've had so many opportunities to lead and give back to my fellow students. Being a part of these organizations has shown me the power of bringing different personalities and cultures together to make a real impact. And now I want to leave you with this. Being able to experience so many different things in this school setting has helped me learn so much about myself and what I want to do in my life. Being a part of CSA and our dance team is getting to take part in so many opportunities, both inside and outside of school, has been amazing. The way BSU steps up for Black History Month, opening it up for everyone, allowing them to experience different aspects of our culture, has been incredible. Being in Girls in Christ and FCA Fellowship of Christian Athletes has helped me grow in my faith and better my understanding with my walk with God. Dr. Phillips High School has given me a welcome, supportive environment I never expected. I walked in thinking I wouldn't fit in, but instead I found one family, one pride. And that's what I hope everyone at Dr. Phillips gets to experience in these many resiliency summits, because being on this council has given me the opportunity to express my ideas, push for change, and work towards making our school a better place. And with everything I've done and plan on doing, we remain never less than the best. Thank you so much. I'll just go back to Katerina.
The Visual Performing Arts Magnet has won Magnet Schools of America, School of Distinction, and School of Excellence. What's wonderful about VPA is its diversity in programs. Whether you dream of acting center stage or writing your own compositions, there's something for every kid to connect to. There are seven strands in total: band, dance, chorus, orchestra, theater, TV film, and art, as well as some smaller, almost micro strands found in between. For example, there's electronic music, EM, where students learn sound mixing, fully for film, that's what sound effects are, and have been recording their own monthly podcast. Today, we're going to be highlighting two of VPA's many strands, starting with the TV Film Magnet. I am very proud to represent the TV Film Magnet, which I would argue is one of the least-known programs our school has to offer. TV Film focuses and prepares for all aspects of filmmaking, including but not limited to creative filmmaking, you know, movies, short films, TV shows, news broadcasting, advertisements, PSAs, and live streaming. Five years ago, four students during the COVID era asked if they could attempt to livestream the upcoming football game. Ever since that rocky but ambitious recording, the stream team was born. As a four-year member of the stream team myself, I've gained a combined 700-plus hours of community service and paid work hours. It prepares you. Recording everything from theater shows to cooking competitions. I cannot recommend this magnet enough, it is the coolest thing ever. As someone who intends to go to college for film, my favorite parts of this magnet have been the 48-hour film competition, which is what that second photo is from, which is where we high schoolers compete against colleges and professionals, as the only high schoolers there, to competitively create a film within only two days. My other favorite is our annual film festival that we put on ourselves. We host a mock Oscars ceremony where we screen each project from the past year and give out awards. Mark your calendars, because this year's is April 11th, and you're all invited! Those two photos, the, well, you have labels. Those are from my senior class and I's film. We have been working on a pirate film, which serves as the opening for the film festival, setting the tone and getting everyone excited for what they're about to see. This year, we have been lucky enough to collaborate with Pirate Adventure Theater and Pirates Mini Golf on the project. So just again, the first photo is stream team, that's our live streaming. Next, our 48-hour on set, then film fest, and the last one is our news broadcast. We do a lot! Our second spotlight is on the Dance Magnet. The Dance Magnet is full of incredible talent, both onstage and off. All of these photos are from a choreographed piece by a senior in the magnet named Valeria Perez called Incandescence, which won third place at Nationals this year. Oh my God. The Dance Magnet also works with a large number of guest choreographers, such as the John Layer Dance Company from New York. This is so each dancer can learn more about every style and technique, as well as what it's like to be a professional in the dance world. Inclusivity. The Dr. Phillips High School is an incredibly inclusive space, housing currently both nearly 3,000 high school students and a small number of preschoolers. Amidst already busy schedules, some of the Dr. Phillips students choose to take the elective course POPS, or Peers Offering Peer Support. While some students aid others via tutoring and technical help, others volunteer their time working with disabled students and/or preschoolers. I, myself, am currently taking AP Art History, a small class boasting no more than nine students total. While my coterie and I research pieces of the past, students with disabilities and other special needs fill the rest of the room, creating new art pieces of their own based on the works my class is studying. For example, when my class learned about the art of the Inca Empire, the POPS students made corn out of foil, imitating maize cobs found in 1400s Peru. Going back to those adorable preschoolers, the Dance Magnet often works very close with our smallest Panthers. But you don't need me to tell you about that, I think they'd rather show you. Here to introduce Dance and BPK is Andre Roche.
Good afternoon. My name is Andre Roche, and I am a member of the Dance Magnet program at Dr. Phillips High School, as well as the inclusion program. I serve as an executive intern in the dance program and with the pre-K students with unique abilities. I've learned many things working as an intern, including patience, creativity, communication, and leadership. I can understand a bit of what it's like to be a teacher, and I've reestablished my basic foundation as a dancer. By focusing on the basics, I've gained a deeper understanding of the fundamentals of technique, so I can teach it correctly. Aside from training, I've also been able to establish a connection with my peers, making the process more enjoyable overall. Having that relationship makes my words more impactful and makes it more likely they'll listen. I'm there to help them, and I want them to know that. Working with the little ones offers the high school students a chance to shine as servant leaders and respond to the needs of others. They're learning what I've learned from teaching them. Next, you will get to enjoy our inclusion program in motion. You may now take the stage. Thank you. Thank you.
Wait, don't go too far, because I think we want to get a picture with the dancers and the students from Dr. Phillips. Yes, I think we're gonna get a picture of everybody.
Like, either way it goes, if I don't speak, we can go home. Like, we can go home, yeah. I'm hungry, and I'm ready for my dance.
What the frick is all this stuff?
Thank you for letting us grab a picture, you guys were amazing. I think- Are you Dr. Phillips students? Do you still have more to your presentation?
No, because it goes into my residency summit session.
Thank you so much, Dance Magnet and Little Kiddos. Having these impactful sessions created a meaningful experience for both students and teachers, fostering learning, growth, and unity. One of our teachers even observed a session, found it valuable, and requested it for her own class, and then quizzed them on it. As someone who helped teach and share this information, it was very incredible, rewarding to see others engage in conversations with others, and their challenges on how to tackle them. It deepened my understanding and passion for educating others, reminding me how important it is to create spaces for students to express themselves, and that concludes is everyone's responsibility. That impactful of these moments will continue to inspire us beyond these years. Thank you so much for having us and allowing us to showcase our amazing school. Thank you so much.
Oh my goodness, wow. So, so much to say. We have some board members that would like to share some comments with you guys. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. Ah, DP! Yes, yes! Listen, I am so excited, and I often say this, but I will say it again. I opened Dr. Phillips High School in 1987 as one of the drama teachers there, and I worked with Kathy Fonsby and the principal, who's now Jackie Ramsay. She also was a teacher there with me. We're so excited, and I remember, I think Dr. Phillips was one of the first high schools to have a pre-K program there for the children to come, and, you know, that's so important to have that. It takes a lot of patience, I know, but, you know, you need to let children see where they may be as years to come. So that's a good role model for them, and that, listen, those little children, let me tell you something, they will never forget this experience. They will never forget this experience, and I'm sharing this quote that says, "A child will lead them." That, I am so proud of what you all are doing at Dr. Phillips and the work and the energy the VPA program has always been second to none, and I'm just so grateful that you all thought of our robbery to come and share with us your Center for International Studies program. I was one of the teachers who was sent to Taiwan for a summer to teach, and then when Nelson Mandela became the president of South Africa, a group of us went to South Africa to get them started, and I was of the educational component there. So, it's just wonderful to see that you're still thriving, and you're still doing wonderful. And my dear friend Kathy, girl, you're still doing it with your dance program, we're so grateful. We're so grateful, and I want to encourage you all, I'm just so proud of your work and what you're doing, the film program that's there, and Dr. Phillips has set a precedent, precedence for this district for years. So you were the first to have a VPA magnet and a Center for International Studies program, and then other schools were added to that, that opportunity, given that opportunity to do that. So again, I want to tell you thank you. We enjoyed the presentation, the energy of the children, oh my god. I love it, I love it, especially when she said, "Want to make good choices, make a good choice." I love it. So thank you all for coming, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Ferrante.
Thank you. I wanted to just say how incredible the entire presentation was. Thank you so much for coming. I feel like you brought us into school with you. We were able to just get a little glimpse of what you all do on a daily basis and just the different avenues that you can select. What an incredible range that you have at Dr. Phillips. Also, just wanted to say how great, I love how you decided to make that mental health website. I think that was incredible. It's easy way to, for a student or parents to be able to just jump in and navigate. There's so much information out there, and honestly, sometimes as board members, we have trouble going into our own website, trying to find things, it's there, it's just trying to find it all, and so I think you guys saw that yourselves within your own space and said, "How can we make this easily accessible?" So kudos to you all for doing that. I love all the different ideas that you had. I think we've heard resounding from all over Orange County about the mental health days and how absolutely boring it is to just sit on a computer and watch a video. And I think we really do need to have more, you know, like lively sessions, have a real live person in and speaking about real topics that kids are struggling with or dealing with on a daily basis, and so I love that you, you know, realized what the need was and were able to pivot and figure out what was going to work for your students. I thought that was incredible. Great job on that. And just lastly, I love the little messages that you guys all wrote and were able to slip, you know, throughout the school. I think just even those kind words, a smile goes a long way. We were just talking about the golden rule this morning, and I think you guys just showed that very well, and just doing to others and showing, just pouring into your school what you would love to receive back from it. So thank you again for letting us get a little glimpse of a day in the life.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most of my fellow board members have already shared what I was gonna say, so I'll just say, "Great job." It was an awesome presentation, and I really do believe with student-led initiatives that impact students at a larger, has a larger impact on students than if an adult would just be in their room and giving out the same information. So kudos to you and your team, the, it was so cute.
Dance Magnet and Little Kidd.
Yeah, our little pre-, they were adorable, they did a fantastic job. So kudos to you and to Dr. Phillips, it was wonderful, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Douglas.
Yes, I just wanted to say that it's amazing that when students take over their own, you know, learning and education, they can produce amazing things. And what we saw tonight, just the work of these wonderful students, and how wonderful and amazing and friendly, user-friendly it can be, and not be there just looking at a video that is pretty boring the whole time, okay? So thank you so much. And I also would like to note this diversity that you guys bring, it's just incredible. I commend you, and just like you said, the golden rule, absolutely love you, respect, okay? And just, you know, respect everyone, doesn't matter who they are, where they come from, just respect, and you show it, and I thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Douglas. And again, I will just reiterate, thank you so much for coming and sharing what you did about your school, and I tell you, we talk a lot lately about how we have to communicate with the community how wonderful our schools are, and how public, our local public schools are the best choice for our students, for offering so many choices for our kids. I would love to see the students themselves doing promotional videos about their schools. If, if these kids, and the way they presented tonight about the opportunities at their school, they were so passionate about it and so excited about it, if they were in a video showing that, I'm thinking tons of kids would want to come to Dr. Phillips High School. So I would suggest that we consider making student videos, or have students on, you know, flyers and billboards and advertising all the great things about our local public schools, because they do a pretty good job showing how excited they are to be at their school. You guys were amazing. It is really the highlight of our day of our jobs, getting to hear from our students. And thank you again, Dr. Vasquez, for having this great superintendent's council with all these students across the district. It has been such a delight hearing from them, really. Thank you all, and now you may leave if you would like to.
Thank you so much.
It is time for recognitions. Honoraries and guests, we ask that you please stay in the board chambers until all of the recognitions are complete, that way everyone feels equally honored. I will dismiss you when the recognitions are complete. Tonight, we're going to continue celebrating the arts, as well as OCPS students who have been busy bees, and we're also going to recognize another group of our excellent custodians. First up are the winners from the Scripps National, or, sorry, Scripps Regional Spelling Bee, sponsored by Orange County Public Schools. Can the three young men and their families please stand up? We've got a picture on the screen of those winners when they won. That was such a good time. The Bee was held in our boardroom in March, and it was made possible through a gift from the Foundation for OCPS by a major donor. I was at the Bee that morning and blown away by you guys and your spelling, and I have to say, it was quite funny, because Dr. Armbruster, who was the master of ceremonies, and I spoke afterwards, and I think we both were eliminated in the first round. I was seriously trying to spell some of these words, some of them I didn't even know what they were, and, I'm sad to say, and I'm a reader, so I was just like, to hear these young students spell some of these words, it just blows your mind. So it was a wonderful event, and these three young men will be representing us in Washington, DC, at the National Spelling Bee. They have studied so hard, and we are all so proud of you. Nancy Golden from Curriculum and Instruction is going to tell us a little bit more and introduce the three of you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bird. Good evening, Superintendent Vasquez, board members and guests. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Vice Chair Bird for your presence at the Regional Spelling Bee, we really appreciate that, and to Dr. Armbruster, who stepped up to be our emcee, that was great, and he knows how to sell spaghetti, right? We know that. So this event would not be possible without the generous support of our donors and our partners in education. Their contributions to our foundation are the cornerstones of our success. Tonight, we have the distinct honor to recognize three exceptional students who will be representing Orange County Public Schools at the prestigious Scripps National Spelling Bee in May, just outside of DC. Their journey to this moment is a testament of their unwavering dedication and commitment. It began with their victory at their representative school bees, followed by a rigorous district qualifier, where they competed against the top 100 spellers in our district. From that pool, only 24 students earned the coveted golden ticket to the Regional Spelling Bee. After eight intense rounds of spelling and vocabulary, these three remarkable, remarkable young men emerge as our champion. Please join me in congratulating 5th grader Diego Gaiagos from Lakemont Elementary School, 7th grader Luis Atavas from Discovery Middle School, 8th grader Aiden Westover from Odyssey Middle School. We wish you the best of luck at Scripps, and I'm pleased to announce that each of our outstanding spellers will be receiving $1,000 to help offset the costs associated with their trip to the national competition. This generous support is made possible through the generosity, continued generous, excuse me, the continued generous support of our donors to our foundation and our partners in ed. So congratulations and good luck, and I'll see you in DC.
So exciting, and we're gonna have you three come up for a picture with the board, and then we're gonna have your families also join you.
Yeah, no confetti today.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Good, big smile, big smile again, one more. And then the lovely families, come on up.
Families.
The principal's over here.
Let's go.
Nancy.
Come on down.
Nancy for sure. Nancy's lovely. Sure, let's have school people.
You did the hard work this year.
Do you want to give the board a word to spell while we're setting?
Spaghetti.
Spaghetti? P-A-S-T-A. Good. Big smile, big smile again, look happy. Hold on, good one, two, and hit the confetti.
Sorry.
So great. Sorry, I hope I didn't embarrass you, Dr. Armbruster, by saying that you were out in the first round, like me, but...
But it was late first round.
Yeah. They were, it was tough. Congratulations again to Louis, Diego, and Aiden. We are so proud of you, and we'll be rooting for you in May of the National Spelling Bee. Give me one second. Next up is another fantastic speller, but this young lady has aced spelling in Spanish. Could, could our Spanish Spelling Bee winner please stand for a moment? The board is so impressed by you and your accomplishment. We know how tough it can be to perform when the spotlight is on, and we have heard that you did an amazing job. I'd like to call up Lizel Hernandez from Multilingual Services, who can introduce you and tell more about the Bee that was held at Timber Creek High School in January.
Hello. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Vasquez. I'm Lizel Nunnis, Director for Multilingual Services. Middle schools, world language departments participated in the annual Orange County Public Schools District Spanish Spelling Bee contest. The competition was held on Wednesday, January 22 at 9:00 AM at Timber Creek High School. This year, over 80 students registered for the competition, and the final round reached the highest word list, erudite. This event helps our students in many ways that enrich their pathway to success and promotes the biliteracy component as part of the portrait of a graduate. The benefits of spelling bees extend beyond language. Students develop self-confidence and communication and public speaking skills. Congratulations to this year's winner, Nayeli Garcia Alvarez from Conway Middle School.
Congratulations, Nayeli. Would you like to come up and get a photo with us? Thank you. Yeah, she's like, your family can come up with you. Would you want to have your family sit there by yourself? Wonderful. Congratulations to all of our Bee winners for your awesome accomplishments this year. It's good to know that, we were talking about this earlier, spelling, about how we worry sometimes that kids aren't learning how to spell, but apparently they are. It's wonderful. We are going to congratulate another one of our amazing students with art, some more art. It's night of art, right? The artwork that you are going to see on the screen in just a moment was made by Hunter Creek, Hunter's Creek Middle School 8th grader Maya Beltran. Maya, can you and your family please stand? This is super exciting, because her work was chosen from among many entries by middle school students across the state in public and private and home schools. It was judged as one of the best by art teachers from around Florida. Personally, I can see why it's considered the best. It is a stunning picture with those, that color is just, you can feel the warmth just by looking at the picture, which is exactly what art does, right? It makes you feel something, and I definitely can feel that. It's beautiful. The very exciting part of this, though, is that her art is now on display at the Capitol. Yes, it is. And it will be there through the remainder of the current session. Maya, your state rep is Jennifer Rita Harris. Her aide, Kelsey Hurley, is here today in your honor. Kelsey, where are you? Hi. So, let's have another round of applause for Maya and her fantastic artwork. We are so excited that you and your artwork are representing Orange County Public Schools at our state Capitol. We would love to have you come up for a photo with the board as well. And I think Jason Lockers is here, and Representative Harris's aide could come up as well. Mia, I'm so sorry, Mia. Thank you for correcting me, Mia.
Her family members.
Mia, what city is it?
Is it New York?
It is. That's beautiful. I know. Great job, Mia.
Good job, Mia. So, our next group for recognition, last week, we honored a group of custodians for certification that they earned. And this week, we are honoring the rest of them. It was such a large group, we had to split it up. Our custodians this evening are among 84 that earned the Florida School Plant Management Association certificates. And we know that it took a lot of hard work and dedication to take this step. Let's give our custodians a round of applause. I'd like to invite Custodial Services Director Carlos, Carlos Mafuz to the podium. He's going to introduce our custodians and tell us more about his staff's outstanding accomplishments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Carlos Mafuz, Director of Custodial Service. Since we established FSBMA certification like two years ago, we graduate around more than 100 custodian. But this class, I mean, every class is important to me, but this class is very important to me, because I hired most of them probably 10 years ago when I was an area manager. Some of them were temp custodian, working only five, six hours, and now they are crew leader, master crew leaders, resident. So, that has a special touch for me. As you know, FSBMA is a state certification, and it takes seven weeks, three days per week, three hours per day. So, there's a lot of sacrifice for them, transportation, schedule, and other stuff. These sacrifice give you, give them an extra tool, not just for professional development, but just to help them in what they do every day to make sure that our student has a clean environment. I always say this, and you're going to hear me say this for the next 15 years, every time that a student graduate, custodians are part of the graduation, right? Because you give them a clean environment, and you should be proud of them. Thanks for all your hard work, not just for the FSBMA, for everything that you do every day to make sure that our student has a clean environment. And you should be proud of them. Thank you, guys. I'm going to call your name. If you can, please stand up and hold your certificate. Daisy Fermay. Albina Torres. Eric Greif, Eric, where is Eric? Joseph Robinson. Sandra Restrepo. Melton, where's Melton? I saw Melton. Lázaro Alfonso. Samantha Yulet. Dana Masánchez. Siomara Lojio. Vanessa Roman. Olympia Espinoza. Osvaldo Isaac. Pierre Orsmuus. Luis Henry Castro. Ken Not. Jairan López. Charmaine Gordon. Solange Arieta. Guys, again, very proud of you. You should be proud of yourselves, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. You're right, they should be proud of themselves. Can you tell us real quick how, how many hours, I know you told us at the last board meeting, or someone did, how many hours they had to put in for this certification?
It's a seven day, it's a state certification, so they have to, seven, seven weeks, three hours, three days per week. So...
So, it's a lot.
It's a, it's a lot of sacrifice.
63 hours? Yeah. They're like, yeah, we know. That is a lot.
And it's during the day, keep in mind, our staff, majority of our staff work, you know, the second shift. So, there's a lot of logistic for them, transportation, second job, daycares. So, it's a, it's a huge sacrifice.
So, it shows how much they care.
Yes.
About their job.
It's, yeah, the commitment is right there.
The commitment level, yeah.
And I'm very proud of that.
It's so amazing. Member Felder had buzzed in. She wants to say a quick word.
Thank you so much, Chair. I, I said it the last time when we honored the earliest set of custodians and their work and their effort. I say this, and I mean it. If you want to know what is really going on in a school, have a conversation with the custodian. They don't miss anything. They see it all. And they care. A lot of times, we look at what we do as teachers and administrators with students, but a lot of custodians have established real relationships with children, with the students. And they can find out some things that a psychologist will spend hours trying to get, and they'll get it in five minutes or 10 minutes. So, I want to say to you that we certainly appreciate your work. I especially appreciated the custodians that I got to know at the schools where I taught. And my room was always cleaned. And I would have time with them. And sometimes they say, you know, Ms. Felder, I got to finish my work. I say, have a seat, sit down. I got to finish doing my grades. Let's just talk, you know? But I'm just so grateful that we have this honor bestowed upon these men and women, because you need to know that we really, words cannot express it, but we really, really appreciate your work and what you do and the pride that you take in when you do your work. That means so much. And when students see that, that does something for them. So, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for the extra time you took for your certification, and the fact that you're doing something that you love and you like. And we're so, so, so appreciative. Thank you so much.
Well said, Member Felder. Thank you. And I completely agree. I will share a little quick, fun tidbit that I actually found out today, because I wasn't sure of the location. But my grandfather was a custodian for Orange County Public Schools. And I, it was when I was very young, and there was no one in the family that could tell me what school he was at. So, I asked staff today if it would, how hard it would be to find out, and it wasn't hard at all. So, he was at Howard Middle School. He retired in 1989 as the custodian at Howard Middle School. So, and I remember as a little girl, what I loved about it was that he would bring me home all the paperwork that they were throwing out, like the forms, because, you know, everything was on paper back then. And I used to play school with it. So, he brought it home for me. But, but I just remember, he loved it, and he loved his job. And I agree with Member Felder, as an educator, as a teacher, the time that I spent with my custodians in my school was, was wonderful. And I can still remember, the first job I had, the custodians were, their office was actually next to mine. And I had a great relationship with them. And the, the way they cared about the school, it was, it was like their personal home. It was just, it's just a beautiful thing. And I'm so glad that you guys did the certification, as she said, so that we had the opportunity to, to recognize you and to let you know how much, what you do every day matters and helps us do the job of educating these kids. And thank you for that. We are very thankful for you. We would love to have you all come up for a picture as well with, I think we're going to have Rory come up, too.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I just want to emphasize, one of the good portion I mentioned in the last meeting, the FSBMA is not only about the cleaning process. There's a leadership portion, there's a how to deal with people portion, right? Because we want to create that culture of development inside the organization. One, two, three, four of my managers, right here, one of them, their status is a temp. They were crew leaders, right? And right now, and today, they're senior area manager, area manager. So, it just, we want to create that opportunity for the staff, okay?
Yeah, that's wonderful.
However you like.
Okay, but they're both options?
Yes. So, if we go here... Let me, let me try it off your jump drive. Let's see if it works better off your jump drive.
Don't judge how it looks.
I don't judge anything. I'm an IT guy.
A little steel headed.
Oh, that's cute.
This, okay, this does conclude our recognition portion of the meeting. So, if you are here for recognition, you may now leave, if you'd like, or you could stay. You're free to go. for recognition, you may now leave, if you'd like, or you could stay. You're free to go. We're taking a little pause for a technical difficulty. Okay, we'll go back to our, okay. Okay. Oh, wait, no, we got it up. I think it's there. We good? Real quick, though, I did forget to ask Dr. Vasquez, was there any newly appointed administrators?
No, we do not.
I didn't think so. We're going to switch around the agenda a tiny bit and move to our strategic plan update. We're ready? Okay. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Tonight with us, we have the great pleasure of hearing from one of our phenomenal partners, Kathy Ramsberger, who is the president and CEO of the Dr. Phillips Center. When I first became superintendent, Kathy was one of the very first to reach out and have a meeting and truly wanting to expand the support they give to our children and trying to think outside of the box. They're amazing partners who are celebrating 10 years. We just talked about that before the meeting. And I can still remember going to the initial meetings and they were showing us these incredible drawings. We were like, oh my gosh, this is like, how is this going to happen? And you have just been such an incredible leader. What you've been able to do for our community, the exposure of the arts to our children and our families is second to none. And so I'm so grateful that you're going to be able to share with our board and with our community and all of our stakeholders, all that the Dr. Phillips Center does for our students. So the podium is yours.
You can slide it. Just let me know. You can just slide it. And then when you get to the video part, you can just click it. I'll stay here if you need me.
Yeah, we'll sit together.
Sure.
So we cleared the room. Thank you for letting us come and give a 10-year update. There's a lot of people that have helped this project along the way. And the journey is always who you're with, right? And Mayor Chair Jacobs, I know that she's here, and Vice Chair Byrd, and board members, some of you I know very well. Vicki was one of our very first volunteers. And Superintendent Vasquez, you've always taken our calls. So thank you very, very much. So I want to just give you a little background on the center. And then we want to share with you how much we love working with students. And actually, we like working with all people. Actually, that's the wonderful thing about creating great places. You know, can everybody be there? And so we had this opportunity back in 2003 to build a performing arts center. And the reason why it was interesting to me and to our chair at the time, Jim Pugh, and Mayor Dyer, is there's very few art centers that are built, because you don't tear them down, right? You never tear them down. They're built by philanthropy. They're built by great leaders. And in America, we built our performing arts centers to be very special places. You walked up to the arts. You got dressed up going to the arts. You had to have means to enjoy the arts. You'd maybe go once or twice to a performing arts center. It wasn't the same in Europe, where the arts was on the town square and you went all the time. And it was approachable. And it was at grade. And it was programmed for you and for me and everybody else. And there was a great community outside the art center where you celebrated before and after. We didn't build them this way, actually throughout the world, but especially in America and in Canada. So we thought, you know, could we, could we do something a little different? Needs to be a special place, because it is going to be there forever. But how do you make it for every life? So what was interesting is, could we build an art center that could break down the barriers of elitism and run it and program it at risk and run a good business, so we could actually give something back to the community? Our Board of Directors is a nonprofit board. We've raised a significant amount of funding to build an asset and donate the money back to the community. We don't own the asset. We run the asset at risk for 100 years. There's no annual public support that comes and funds our programs. We raise money to do it. Sometimes there are some grants that come in from public entities. It's a city asset that we've donated $160 million to build. And then we run it at risk and we've grown the business to about $65 million a year from the very first year, 10 years. Okay? So we want to show, why is it with a nonprofit? The reason why is because, one, we are committed to making sure that the vision and the mission of the center is going to live in perpetuity. Okay? So here we go, just a little tap. Okay, there we go. Our vision is arts for every life. And Vicki, if you don't mind me calling you by your first name?
Yeah.
Okay, Chair Vicki. We brought a group of people together for the first three or four years, and we just listened to them. What would you want in a performing arts center? Takes a lot of time to talk to a lot of people, if you really are genuine about building something that's going to change and evolve an industry. And we did. And our vision was arts for life. And through a bunch of volunteers, and I think Vicki, you were in the room when this happened, we kept talking about, you know, what should it be? And then a volunteer said, you know, it sounds like it should be for every life. What we love about that is we trademarked it. And all throughout the country now, people are coming up with different phrases, arts for everybody, you know, a bunch of them, Ryan. But the thing about it is, is we built the center with that in mind. How's it feel that way? How's it programmed that way? How's the reach that way? Okay? The mission of the art center is to be an inspirational place where people love to be. The word arts is purposely not in our mission statement. You have to feel good when you're there. Everybody that works there, our housekeepers, our porters, our volunteers, people that come in and buy a ticket, the artists, our colleagues, everybody has to feel good there. Has to be inspiring. Great places where people gather, no matter what it is, needs to be inspirational. Churches are like that too, right? We have three goals, very simple. One, we are going to create, present exceptional programming that reflects all forms of art and entertainment and event content. And guess what? We make that decision. A very big building, and we decide what comes in the building. We're not a rental venue. We do rent some, but we purposely go out and we program and choose programming at risk. The second one is, how do we celebrate all likenesses and differences? That's what the arts are about. That's what we all, as a society, should be, right? Appreciating everybody. And the arts has a tendency to do that. We also have to recognize that our board's at risk. And if we blow it, they're the ones that write a check. We don't lean into anybody else. So as a, as a board, we, they set high standards. And as a staff, we're never going to let them down. Okay? Because they're at risk. So we also have values. And a lot of art centers don't have values. A lot of businesses, I think, we need to have values. And our team, we have 180 full-time employees, about 160 part-time employees, 200 partner companies, and 300 volunteers, and then a whole bunch of others that just make the building come alive. So we welcome you. Again, this is very different than most art centers. We commit to win every day. We innovate with yes and. We never want to be an institution. We laugh together, which is easy to do, and we laugh a lot, even when we blow it. We embrace authenticity. We create forever memories. Do you remember the first time you went to the theater or to a concert? Never forget it. What a responsibility when someone walks through that front door, to make sure that we give them the best experience. And also, sometimes it might be their last time they have a chance to be at a show. If you ever come to the art center, when you go in, there's some anxiety. But before you leave, turn around and look at the human connection that all people are having. Okay? And we leave with kindness. It's the best way for people to feel comfortable. The nice thing about an art center, our art center, is one thing we did very different. Most art centers, you race to your seat. You want to get there 10 minutes ahead of time. The second you sit down, the relationship is between you and the stage. We wanted to create a community. People come 90 minutes before a show to see each other, or just to be as a community. That person looks just like me, and they're coming to see what I like. That person looks nothing like me, and they like what I like? You bet they do. And that's success for us. And so now we're going to give you just some ideas of how we delivered and how we came up with our purpose. Our purpose all came from volunteers, and talking to people. The other thing that we did is, how do we create a really great work environment? And we've got some great colleagues here today that I'm going to highlight as we go through the presentation, because we lead as a whole organization. And they've done some really great work. Building the building was exciting. Building a culture was extremely rewarding. And I tell you what, in perpetuity, this center is going to have a really great soul, because these guys are all going to pass it on. So far, we've grown our business. Who would have thought that we'd take a little business and we grew it to $61 million a year? Probably going to get a little bit higher too on that. We create 2,100 jobs a year. We've welcomed a whole bunch of people into the building. And these are ticket buyers, they're students. There are people that are going to create a forever memory, like a wedding, a retirement program, a celebration of life, a business meeting. And so far, we've given back to the community about $24.8 million on a few programs. We've given a lot more back, but a few programs specifically are, is we've done almost $6 million in community engagement. Jasmine Reese and Katie Boyer really lead that effort. Educational scholarships, of course, we raise a great deal of money. We want to get to the million dollar mark, right, Ryan? Ryan Simpson, he actually leads our education initiative. $12 million in programming and event rental support. We, I'm not sure if you know this, but we're actually going into the school system and teaching your staff how to use the equipment and how to use the theaters. And we weren't asked to do so. We were in there because we're doing programming called Disney Musicals in Schools. And we realized that they need to really understand how to work their venue, right, if you have one. And then about $5.8 million is in professional services. So when anybody comes to the art center, we kind of coach them up if they've never been in a technical building like that. The current annual economic impact is pretty significant. We got to grow a lot more than that. But you know, sometimes you don't think the arts really are a business. We're a pretty big business. Most art centers are massive cultural anchors and economic anchors, and cities grow to art centers. So far, all of our community engagement and our corporate affairs is led by Rachel Moally. You guys might know her quite well. And to date, we've almost purchased 60,000 tickets. We have to purchase the tickets. We just can't take a ticket and give it away. So we raise money through donors and sponsors. And we give a great deal of first time and forever memories to the most amazing people, that are just little guys, all the way up to big guys. So we do it for vets. We do it for healthcare workers. We do surprise and delights. If we find that somebody's had a tough time, they've lost their home, tragedy, a great celebration, we'll just surprise them. We do that with firefighters and first responders. We do it for underserved kids, overserved kids, tall kids, everybody, right? Whoever we can make sure that we have a chance. If they come to the art center once, could they come back and make it a habit? And we also do, probably one of the only art centers that does veteran, student, and teacher rush tickets. So you can come to the art center any night and ask for a $35 ticket. If we have one, you can have it, purchase it. So our Broadway, we're going to show you how we're in the schools and what organizations. All these organizations, we've done an outreach on, okay? They've done something that we just mentioned. Those are the ones that are located in Orange County. Okay? Big focus for us. Educational classes, Ryan, how big's your team now? 11? He could probably have a team of about 30. That's how many programs. They close out really quickly. We just want to do more. Okay? So so far, about 750,000 participants and students, 825 initiatives. All of these programs are important. I'm going to run through them really quickly, because I think I want to share where they are in Orange County and where they are impacting your programs. Okay? Our Applause Awards, we are actually in nine counties or 11?
10.
10, 10, 10 counties. And what we basically do is, we're putting on and we're adjudicating all high school plays for the entire year. And we pay a great deal of talented people to go and adjudicate these plays from Jacksonville all the way down to Polk County. Yeah, Polk County, yeah. And then we actually, once they're adjudicated, they come in and we actually do awards. And we do a great show called the Applause Awards. And the Applause Awards, two students are chosen and they go compete nationwide. Okay? Amongst many, 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 how many?
About 100 students.
Yeah, 100 students, right? Nationwide that are selected. In 2016, we're just a new center, two students from the same art center and same county won the Jimmy Awards for the first time ever. And they were from Orange County, Tony Marino and Sophia Deller. And they're actually both making a living right now in the field that they love. That's all funded by the art center and the donors. This year, what's the date? Do we know?
The 31st.
The 31st, y'all. Get an invitation. It's actually one of the best shows in Orlando, I have to say, right? So here's, is this a video here? Yep, video. Oh, I can do that. Michael James Gottson, graduate of Dr. Phillips High School. Mm-hmm. Okay, oops, sorry. You got this moving on here.
Yeah, not seeing anything. Sorry about this.
That's okay. We can keep going. We can send it to you guys. Yeah, that's good, that's good, okay. This is one of our favorite programs. It's called Disney Musicals in Schools. Are you guys familiar with Disney Musical School? Okay. So again, this is an initiative that's actually nationwide. And we really embraced it right when we started. Every year, between four and five schools, we hop in and we ask a commitment, that they will commit to doing a Disney musical in school for three years. And the hope is, after we're with them for three years, that the school will continue doing it. What's so wonderful about it is we engage the teachers, the administrators, the parents, and the children to create their own play to do in their school. And at the end of the year, the first year programs all come to the art center. And those kids have a blast, and so does our colleagues. The thing about it is, is many of, believe it or not, some of our colleagues, they're parents in these schools. And I think one of the most heart-wrenching huddles we ever had is she unexpectedly stood up in front of all of us and shared with us what happened in that community because of this program. The connection, the relationships, working together. Sports are like that all the time. But this program brings everyone in from the community, because everybody has to get involved. So we love this program very, very much. And it continues. It's also a great introduction at that age. This is actually another video that we're going to skip. We can share that with you later. But these little guys come in, they just, they just give their hearts out there. Okay? Essentially, Ellington, this is a program that we started with Jazz at Lincoln Center. Okay? Right now, about 1,400 students from 21 schools is a newer program for us, 380 students from three Orange County public schools. It's a jazz festival. Talk about talent. It's amazing. And then again, they have the chance to go and compete in New York City as well. We also have teen ambassadors, 362 total. All year, these kids come in and they learn everything about the art center, how we work. There also are social media voices. They have the chance to really learn the operations of the art center. And they have a great time. They're always very, very wise kids. We also get into spoken word, another form of art that we get into. And you can see that we've been in 13 schools. They're a week-long residency program. And we bring in national artists or local artists. This Plablis is one of our favorites. This program actually goes into other cities for a day. And we leaned into it and said, ah, come for a week. for a week, we'll pay for your week. But, and they usually go to one city with one community. And we asked them, would you come to our community for a week? And in the morning, will you please work with seniors? And at midday, would you work with kids with autism? And in the afternoon, would you work with some high school students? And at the end of the week, these three communities come together, never meeting each other, and they're all in a performance together. The very first time we did this, we were in the Pugh Theater, and the first group up were seniors, and of course, the kids with autism were screaming and yelling and just hooting and hollering during a dance performance. The seniors didn't care, okay? The audience was like, what's going on? The next group that got up there happened to be the kids with autism. And guess what? All the seniors started cheering, and then other people started cheering, right? By the time, or the next kid, the next group, I'm sorry, the next group up was the high school kids. Again, people were cheering while they were there. When the kids with autism got there, the whole house came down. Afterward, there was a chat back, and one of the moms said, I wish that we did an MRI before, during, and after. What was important about that comment is that we always wanted to do an Arts and Wellness Initiative, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But this program was a real spark to that. Second City Residency, this is all funded by donors. This is where we bring in Second City from Chicago. We actually work with students, and they actually have a chance to perform with Second City on our stages, also kids with autism. Six and Jazz, if you have, you're all invited to come see a great program, like the Dr. Phillips High School team that was up here. We learned the hard way. We did this program for two years, and we realized every sixth grader was leaving hating jazz. Our show needed some love and some fun. Now, no one wants to leave. There's a video that, it won't play now, but it's, it's an amazing program. It's so well received now. We want to tour it nationwide, and the kids love, understand. Now, why jazz? It's America's music. It's laced through all different aspects of other music. It's inspired other forms of music. But it's also in a lot of things that we never thought these kids would be associated with, like video games and films, and just, you know, wonderful aspects. They think, oh, that's America's music. Very, very important. That's the video. We'll send it to you. You think it was going to work?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay, here. I shouldn't have touched it. There you go. Let me go back one. No chance. Go down here.
When you think about jazz and its history, this is as American as American can get.
Okay, okay. We have some performing groups, four counts and the quarter notes. They perform all over central Florida, and we actually use professional teachers to actually work with them. Karen Roggerio actually worked there for quite a while. There you go. Okay.
Hold on. The video stopped. Hold on.
Sorry. Glad you're here. Okay. Very good. Okay. Project Wow, we're with the little guys here with Project Wow. We started this actually before we even opened the art center. And again, it's funded by great donors. Okay. 200 schools and organizations we've worked with with all of these programs. And this is where they are in Orange County. So we're committed to this, and it's always a yes and for our team. I think this is pretty amazing. 376,000 kids have been coming to the art center. Look at, and then we love the number of, you know, how many school buses, and how many different programs that wrap around the center. Really makes it come alive when the kids are there. And again, those are forever memories, too. Let's see, this flex, oh, I think we're stuck. Oh, okay, here. This is just to show you how we've grown through Orange County. I think you've seen the schools, but these are all of our community give backs. This is our Applause Awards. A little bit of delay here. More of the Applause Awards and how we engage in a different way. Outreach, and then at DPC. This is our Disney Musicals in Schools. It's thinking. Again, more Disney musicals at schools, the ones that are coming to the center at this point in time. Thinking. Project Wow. Thinking. Lots of celebrations as our surprise and delights. We like to be in the community with spoken word, of course. Still thinking. Essentially, Ellington. We got one more here. Six and Jazz. So if you have in your area a community that you want us to be in, or again, we'll be there. You just have to let us know if we don't know ourselves already. Okay. Oh. So Arts and Wellness, right now, we're doing a great deal of programs. We are one of the only art centers in the southeast that are certified to work with kids with autism. We curate a lot of programs with these kids, and we thought, you know what, I wouldn't be interested if we brought clinicians in and saw how this might make a difference. So we actually have several programs where we're partnered with hospitals. Right now, we do a whole program with stroke survivors around music. And what we learned, it's fleeting, it's too short. They want to be there consistently. We did a clinical research with Alzheimer patients and their caregivers for an entire year to see clinically if it actually mattered medically. And it was the only time this has ever been done with a hospital, and actually at an art center. And it was proved conclusive that the arts medically mattered in this clinical study. Right now, we're working with five different programs with a VA hospital. All this is funded, again, through philanthropy. We have over 22,000 donors so far, $231 million. You can see the $160 million for capital. What we've given back to the community in its entirety is almost about $47 million. And then we also raise money through sponsorship, in-kind giving, et cetera. We've been on the receiving end of some really nice recognitions, and we're only sharing this with you because when we're proud of the partnership we have with Orange County and the business community in Orlando, we have a lot of, a lot of people working at the art center, every different kind, including where right now we're led by some women. We've also been, this is a certification, but Travel and Leisure, World's Coolest, Newest Tourist Attraction. That's great. And then also with Stuyarts Hall, one of the most, 11 most beautiful theaters in the world, three in the United States. And the reason why we were recognized is not only because it's beautiful and it's clean, it has perfect sound, and it has two shapes of a theater, and there's no place like that on the planet. So it was a great achievement to be part of that. We also have some good business awards that we've won. IAVM, amongst all art centers on the planet, we've won that award twice, and then some business awards. We've grown in 10 years. Our business, our first year was 29 million. You can see it fluctuates a little bit. COVID kind of nailed us like everybody else. Our building activity, and this is important, this year, this is first lineup here, we're actually doing 1,100 curtains. And so our building is alive all the time, and our activity is really high. This is just in terms of utilization of space, and this all comes down to a really good point, that our building is full. We can't accommodate how many different types of shows and events that we have there. Even with our school productions, how many times you come here, it's hard to squeeze everybody in. And then this just shows all the other non-ticketed events. So the building is alive, which is a success. It's also an opportunity. And our opportunity here is how do we create a bigger place? How do we program more and invite more in there and get more kids in there? How do we reach more people? And then how do we make sure we run a great business? We want to grow our venue with different sizes of performance venues from nine to 20. I know that seems aggressive, but there are some other program components there, which we'll show in a second. We also want to increase the amount of attendees that actually come to the center. People we want to increase, how many people can actually come and be exposed to the arts. We think the arts really matters from a civic health and wellness perspective. And then, of course, around the business. This is how our businesses grow if we can do this plan. And the nice thing about this is we can keep giving it back to the community, and that's the number one thing. So from that, we developed a master plan, and the idea here is we want to create another 750-seat theater, which is actually perfect size for educational programs and more school events. The Broward Center has a theater that's about this size, and it can be engaged much more. We're also doing creative studios, 150 seats, 100 seats, 50 seats, and lots of classrooms and studio space, which is important. That's above this. But all of this comes into, these are the 11 additional spaces that we're looking to fund, which is exciting. The new master plan and the economic impact, again, it's a good business, and this is where we'll be. Once it's completed, it could be completed in five years, maybe more if we phase it. And I think the most important thing is, we want to deliver on our promise, and we want to work with, you know, with the school system as much as we possibly can, because that's something that I think donors really are investing in our future. And that's something that we all have a great joy in raising funds for. And to us, if we have an audience, we'll go find them and create the best thing for that particular community with this great team. Did I miss anybody? No, I think we're good. Okay, yeah, okay. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Kathy. It was a great presentation. Yes, I believe we have Chair Jacobs on the line that wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair. Kathy, I am so sorry I can't be there, but I couldn't be more proud of the way you and your team have delivered on your commitment. I, I know I've said it to you a million times, but when you talked about arts for every life, I never really thought that it would come to fruition to this level. And every time I come and I see, I see kids, I see people in jeans and tennis shoes and, you know, and fur coats and the whole gamut, and it just warms my heart that you've created what I consider to be, you know, the heart and soul of Orlando. So anyway, I just wanted to congratulate you, and more than anything, thank you, the team, your board, for just creating such a phenomenal place.
Thank you, thank you. I keep wanting to look up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. And Kathy and your team, thank you so much for the presentation. And I, I need to say, I remember this endeavor was intentional. Before you saw all of this beauty, it was concrete and street blockage down Magnolia. And what they did, when they came up with the idea, what I like about this, this artistic endeavor was that they invited people from the community that lived in the Paramore area and just all over the city of Orlando, and this is located in District 5, where the talent resides. I want you to know that they were intentional, and before they even started, you know, the construction, they were intentional in making sure that people were involved with what they were doing. I remember the struggle, the fact, you know, and I love basketball, I love football, I am a sports enthusiast. But I was like, look, we need a serious art center. We can't have the Atlanta Magic and Tampa Bay Bucks, and then, you know, where's the art, where's the, in Disney, where's the huge art center? I'm talking where you could come see plays. And the fact that you guys, the team, you invited people to come in, to be a part, and even after I'm dead and gone, my little name is on the Friends, or it's just on the wall.
It is.
Even when I'm gone, dead and gone, you'll see my name on that wall. I want to tell you thank you for the intentionality of including people. And one of the questions you guys asked was, how can we make this center approachable? Would people will feel good about it? I know one of the things, one of the ways I answered, I say, would people, when children come from Ace, or when they come from Jones, or when they come from anywhere, they need to be able to walk in this place and feel like it's theirs. And my assistant Cindy and I got the opportunity to go recently to the Jazz creation you did for the schools. And let me tell you something. I said, oh, my God. If you didn't know anything about jazz, I mean, it was, it was not a long, it was maybe 35, maybe 40 minutes at the most, because children's attention, you can't keep them there too long. But let me tell you something, the way that gentleman introduced jazz and involvement, it was a lot, a lot of kids, but he was able to silence them and just see, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate the partnership that you all want to have with, with the schools. And I'm like Chair Jacobs, when she said she just couldn't imagine. We saw the pictures, we saw the videos, what it was supposed to be like. All I was sitting in, concrete in an orange swivel chair, we were having hors d'oeuvres. I say, hello, what they going to do? When I walked in that theater and I whispered, and I heard my whisper, I said, ooh, I've got to perform. And as a matter of fact, I took my head to somebody, Levon Bracy, take my picture. This sounds morbid, I'm going to say it. Take my picture bowing. So when I die on the back of my obituary, that's me in that theater, taking my last bow. That's going to be on the back of my obituary in Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center.
Thank you.
Yes, baby, I got it together. Listen, so I want to tell you, thank you, the Jim Pugh Theater, and the fact that you just pulling people from all walks of life to come in to perform, and it's nothing that you can't see there. It's a theater for everyone, and I'm just so grateful, guys, that it got off the ground, and it's flourishing. And we, arts, we need money. We need lots of money to keep it going. But I'm telling you, it's, I'm so very proud of this effort and your work, Kathy, with your team. I'm just so grateful, and I love coming there, even during COVID. Y'all still didn't miss a beat, baby. We have performance outside. Listen, we didn't miss a beat, because the arts must keep going.
Yes, right.
So.
Lincoln Center actually came down and said, how are you doing this? Lincoln Center.
I know. Yeah, because when Michael came to do, he said, are we going, am I still on program? We say, yeah. They say, yeah, you still on program. Come down and perform. And baby, we were out there in our little parts. And we were keeping away from COVID, but we were doing art. So I appreciate sitting on this board, and, and I am an arts enthusiast, and you and I have had many meetings together, talking, and I'm just, I love what we're doing. And when you have involved OCPS, we're the fourth largest district in the state and the eighth largest in the nation. We need to be here. We, we need this. This needs to happen with us. And so I'm so grateful, and I want to tell you just thank you. And we just got to keep it going. Thank you so much.
That's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. I actually really liked those outdoor concerts. Those were fun.
Yeah, it was fun.
I saw Sheryl Crow out there. That was a great concert.
It was good, yes.
Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not here to bring Member Felder down, but the Dr. Phillips Center is actually in District 6, where everything clicks. It's right on the, right on the edge, but it is in fact in District 6. And I just want to say, based on, on the maps and where you were showing where a lot of your work is, a lot of your work is, is in my district. So just on behalf of really all of Orange County, though, thank you, thank you so much for everything that you're doing in our schools. I really appreciate it. My kids have been on all of your field trips, and I know that extra classes and programs that you offer, and I appreciate that you just showcase to our children that, you know, a profession in the arts is a profession. And I think that's really important, as well as just exposing them to so many different types of art that they might not otherwise appreciate. I can tell you, you know, I brought, I took my girls to their first opera when I saw Alis Callen was playing, and it was, it was great. We had a really great experience. Walt Disney Theater is my favorite place for concerts because I'm old and I like to sit down, and I don't like venues that are too big. And I also want to, just your building is beautiful. I run by it in the mornings, and I have for the last 10 years. And also, very much want to thank you for the free air conditioning that I get in the hot summer months when I run right by the doors and the AC is coming out the door. So, so I just appreciate the partnerships that you've made within, within Orlando and within Orange County. And again, just thank you so much for everything you're doing for our students. It is so impactful.
Thank you. Thank you. Good stuff.
Thank you, Member Vanos. Member Farant.
Thank you, and thank you so much for this excellent presentation, for taking the time tonight to come and just show, showcase all the wonderful things that you are doing. So I have several schools within District 3 that showcases the Disney musicals in the schools. And I have literally seen firsthand how this has transformed a community. I have one school that it's a Title I school. We have a lot of special needs students within the, the school. And the way that this literally like takes these kids out of their situations, maybe even the home life, whatever they're coming from, it does not matter. even the home life, whatever they're coming from, it does not matter. As soon as they hit the stage, they become whatever character they have chosen. And I think even the way, I don't know if this is from you all or if it's the school that does this, but the way that it's designed, instead of like you auditioning for a specific part, you just come up and there's like a systematic way that, that it's done. I don't know the name of it, but, do you have that? I don't remember the name. But the way that it's done is just so seamless, it gives them confidence. Honestly, so my, I have five kids, but my two younger ones, we always go to the, to the plays. And all year they ask me, okay, have we missed it? We can't miss that play, Mom, we can't miss it. They're literally one of my favorites. I mean, besides going to the Dr. Phillips Center and watching your incredible shows, but going to the schools and watching them perform, from the, the clothing, you know, they get to go and like pick out the fabric. And I mean, the entire process of it, it isn't just handing them a script and saying, perform. It's like showing them the entire process of it and the kids get to be a part of it. And watching the inclusion as well, kids that may not interact normally, you know, maybe they're in a closed room or not in the general ed room. And now all of a sudden they're performing on stage together and watching everybody kind of like team up. And it's just, it really does put a smile on my face. I think it's incredible, the work that you're doing. Thank you for, you know, taking this model and just showing that it does work and that you can bless an entire community with the arts. So thank you for that. Just wanted to shout out the Disney musicals and how really as a board member and a mom, I've seen it firsthand, it's, it is working wonders. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you Kathy for this great presentation. This was, this was wonderful. And I'll just echo a few things that my fellow board member says, we just, the partnership is so important, not just to OCPS, but more importantly to our students. And to expose them to the different genres and to see what they can be that maybe they didn't know they could be, to have students have access with the, I've been to the Applause Awards twice and, oh my goodness, there is some talented, talented people within OCPS and across central Florida. But to give them exposure and, and give them the opportunity to be on a stage of that size and scale is awesome. And you do the same thing with top talent, like those partnerships that we have are just, we're so blessed to have them and our students are so blessed that they have such a beautiful performing art center to go to, to go and watch plays, to perform and to do all of, of the great things that they want to do. And it's really highlighted arts, like it's, I think it's really elevated the art scene within Orange County. And my husband and I just went and saw Mean Girls. That was our anniversary. Well, he said, I, I bought it, the tickets for him, but he said it was more for me than him because it was Mean Girls. And I said, on Wednesday we wear pink. But I mean, and it's beautiful, it's just, it's beautiful to attend. And I ran into friends there, so you're right, it is part of a community. I was talking to several of my friends that I hadn't seen in a while and then we were both at the same show. So thanks for all that you do. This is a great partnership. Anything that we can do to make it better, let us know. But we're just really proud of all the good work that y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Our General Counsel, Mr. Palmerini, would like to speak.
So I'm actually speaking as father of a son who participated in Second City.
Okay.
This past year. He enjoyed it immensely. He got to work with professionals and got to, you know, work on his comedy and he just raved about doing it. And it's just a cool program that all of our kids can have access to. And, you know, this wasn't here, I, I went to school here when I was, you know, much younger and we didn't have these programs that came through. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for all of the kids here in Orange County and my son was one of them. And it is amazing when these venues were built, I thought I would be going to the new arena to watch games. And I've been to Dr. Phillips Center like a ton more time than any of the other venues.
Is this being recorded clean?
Yeah. And, and we, you know, I'm originally from New York, so we go up to see Broadway and my wife and I always comment that we love the theaters up there, but it's nothing compared to Dr. Phillips Center and how beautiful the venue is and the amenities that come with it. It really is a first rate facility. So I just wanted to give my two cents and say thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerini. Member Douglas.
I just would love to say that you are in District Four, where we always expect more. Unfortunately, those ladies took, okay, anyway. I just want to say thank you for your presentation, those numbers are impressive. And, you know, on behalf of OCPS and all the kids, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For what you do for them. This is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will still go to Dr. Phillips in District Six or Seven, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so competitive. Thank you. And, and again, we really do appreciate you coming to share and just kind of wrap it all up for us, all the amazing things that you do. Because we know it and we know each individual program, but when you see it all laid out like that, it really is amazing. As Member Ferrant says, that the blessing to the entire community that the Dr. Phillips Center gives us. And, you know, we talk a lot about how OCPS is one of the best places for arts education anywhere in the nation. And it, it really makes you wonder when you see all of this, if, I mean, it's no accident that we are considered one of the best places for arts education and we have this tremendous arts facility that provides all of these programs for all of our kids. It's really phenomenal. And I'll just say a really funny story that you'll appreciate, I think. I was chaperoning my daughter's school to the Dr. Phillips Center for, to listen to the Bach Choir practice. And I was the chaperone and we could not get the girls out of the bathroom because they were all in there taking selfies inside the gorgeous bathroom. And we finally were like, okay, you have to get in, we have to listen to them sing and then we can come back and we can take some more selfies. But they were just blown away because they don't get there very often, as, as often as, you know, they probably should. But they were just blown away at how pretty it was in there. So it was a little problem for us, but it was great. So thank you again for everything that you do and for your service to our community. We appreciate you. Thank you all for being here.
Yeah, thank you all, thank you. And thank you, Mayor Jacobs. All right. Hey, thank you.
Okay, I think at this time, we're gonna go back to our Association Council reports. And the only one that we have here tonight is our Orange County Association of School Administrators with Dr. Karina Chanu, who is the president-elect. So she's gonna share a few words with us.
Good evening, Chair Jacobs. Good evening, Vice Chair Bird. Good evening, Superintendent Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Armbruster, staff and community members. I am Karina Chanu, President, Principal of Windy Ridge K-8 and current president-elect for the Orange County Association of School Administrators, OCASA. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about some of the wonderful things happening at OCASA to help our membership of almost 400 administrators best support one OCPS. This year, we have focused on developing the skills of our members in ways that will help them become better leaders in our schools. We have designed the Membership Development Series, which offered special sessions on the most pertinent topics that our administrators encounter in our roles. We have partnered with several key department leaders to ensure that we are getting the best guidance from the experts. We have worked with experts from Labor Relations to ensure that our administrators, newest to their roles, had the best understanding of both the OESPA and the CTA contracts. We have provided sessions for our members to better understand the legal issues that are most prevalent in our schools. And we have provided sessions for the future financial planning to help our members make the best decisions now for their life after retirement. We believe that the responsibility of developing the skills of our leaders doesn't just come from district leadership, but it also comes from strong collaboration among peers and experts. In addition to creating the Membership Development Series this year, OCASA is proud to share that we have also established the OCASA Future Educator Scholarship. This scholarship is designed to support OCPS students who wish to have a future career in education. The power of educators cannot be measured in test scores alone. It can be measured in the opportunity to change the lives of children. Board Member Douglas told me one day that if she could go back in time, she would love to be a student while Dr. Armbruster was principal. Well, some of you may know this, but Dr. Armbruster was my principal when I was a 14-year-old kid at West Orange High School. And if you think he's got energy now, let me tell you 20-something years ago what that was like. But honestly, back then, we had no idea what his real job was because we were all convinced that he was there just for us, to encourage us, to motivate us, sometimes to father us, but most importantly, to make sure that each of us were successful. That is the real magic and the real measure of educators, the impact that one person, one educator can make on so many. This is why supporting future educators and the future of education is so important to our organization. We truly, truly have the power to change lives. We are honored to pay it forward to the next group of students who are just here tonight, who will become our future teachers. They'll become our future administrators and the future of our district and the future of public education. We in OCASA believe that leaders can build stronger schools together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chanu. That was wonderful. And I love your observations of Dr. Armbruster. I'm sure that that was amazing.
Spent many years of observation.
But yes, but I will say, the words that you said were really meaningful and the fact that as students, you thought that his sole job was to be there for you, that is such a powerful statement.
We still do.
Thank you. Oh, this is sweet. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
For sharing.
My daughter is watching and she said, this is, was my teacher.
She was mine, she was ours.
Yes, history teacher. She said, that was my history teacher. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So cool. Good night. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Sorry, another technical problem. All proclamations were adopted by vote of the board at the August 27th board meeting and celebrations and observations. The list will remain on the agenda for the entire school year. Mr. Palmerini, do we have anybody who has come to speak to the school board on items on the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Seeing that there is no member of the public who wishes to provide public comment, we will, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval?
Okay, we have a motion from Member Gallo and a second from Member Vanos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Chair.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we have no non-consent agenda. Superintendent, it's your turn.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments this evening. I am gonna start with the budget outlook. I had the opportunity to be in Washington DC with the Council of Great City Schools and the picture from the federal government is quite bleak. There are quite a few unknowns, but the federal dollars are in jeopardy, not, maybe not for this upcoming year, but there are many discussions happening around Title II, Title IV. For those of you that may not know, Title II dollars fund professional development. In our district, that is primarily positions at the district level. Instead of using general dollars, we use those title dollars to fund those positions. And we have, I believe it's close to 130, that if those dollars are cut, we would need to revisit our model for presenting and providing professional development. Additionally, there are concerns regarding cuts to Medicaid. Many are not familiar that our nursing services, our OTPT, some of our speech therapies are, we have dollars reimbursed through Medicaid. And if Medicaid dollars are cut, we are so required to provide those services as part of IDEA. And so cuts to Medicaid would mean that we would need to dip into our general fund to be able to pay for those services and those personnel. Additionally, you, I'm sure you've seen in the news about cuts here at the state level. Most recently, and I believe Judy Hayes, one of our parents, spoke early today about the potential cuts to ACE funding, AP funding. Once again, that those are courses that are being offered to our students, that if there were cuts to that particular funding source, we would be required to either make decisions about whether we continue to provide those and keep our children competitive or whether we look at cutting those services. Overall, as a district, all district departments have been asked to look at a 2% cut. School budgets have been provided and this year we have revisited the funding formula. We are looking at a $27 million projected loss of FTE due to declining enrollment for the upcoming year, an additional $10 million because SAI and SRI dollars are not being provided. And what that means for our school budgets is that we are looking to be able to provide to our schools the funding that they receive for the students that are generated. However, in the past, we've been able to allocate more dollars through our funding formula, whether it was looking at a ratio of 1 to 18 per class, for class size at the K to three level, whether it was our rounding formula. We're no longer able to do that. And so schools will be working together. Every school will get the dollars they generate and then we will work with each individual school to ensure they have what they need to support our children and to support our teachers. But the funding outlook is bleak. In my opinion, I have not seen a time in my educational career where it has been this bleak. Having said that, I want to talk to the board about our SRO contract negotiations. And I bring that up because what we are, we've been engaged in productive conversations with the five entities, but we have not been able to reach an agreement. The current dollar figure would add in over $2 million to what we are currently paying. And I know that our conversation a few months ago surrounding guardians in our school was one that the board was adamant that we could not look at or that we would not pursue. I am requesting that the board reconsider that stance and that we provide you an opportunity to hear how other districts are using guardians in their schools and for us to have a conversation around the use of guardians as we are looking at a very bleak fiscal outlook. Additionally, I want to say thank you to Dr. Armbruster and to Doreen Concolino, who really have been working tirelessly over the last several months, trying to deal with the potential budget deficits that we see. Additionally, on top of the 2%, Dr. Brown Cannon and her team has been looking at the various programs that we have in our schools, various resources. We are overspending in that area. We are also overspending in the area of mental health and they will be bringing recommendations to me and to the board regarding potential cuts to be able to align ourselves with the funding sources. funding sources. That's the bad news. Now, I want to talk a little bit about some good news, some follow-up from previous board meeting. There was great concern around safety and the scooters and children that are riding some not-so-carefully, and I asked our team to go back, talk with the different municipalities that we are working on safety, and I wanted to provide an update to you regarding that particular topic. So first, the sheriff's office has been proactive in creating documents that outline the rules surrounding scooters, and that information has been shared. They are working to enforce those rules. Additionally, both Orange County and the City of Orlando traffic engineering teams have been working on projects related to scooter safety. They have made this a significant focus, and our team meets with them monthly, along with other groups, to discuss the necessary changes and the projects that are undergoing. These teams play a crucial part in the updating of the infrastructure on OCPS property and off-property, including the signage, the crosswalks, the crossing guards. And that collaboration, those conversations, are focused on the safety of our students. We're also working with multiple nonprofits, providing outreach, training, and safety information out in our schools. We will continue to do that. And additionally, we sent out another memo in the deputy superintendent's newsletter referencing scooter safety, electric bikes, mopeds, and reminding our schools to focus on the messaging of safety. You also asked or inquired about a student on the board. Scott Howard and his team are researching other districts that do have a student on the board, how they are selected, their roles and responsibilities, and we believe we'll be able to present to you more information at the next board meeting. Can I have my slides of the community town halls up, please? Thank you. So we, we have finished our community town halls, and this year, we held them at the middle school, selected middle schools. And those have been completed. You can see the dates on the screen. And I wanted to just follow up and give you what the overall trends were from these community meetings. These were different than the first two years, and I'm happy to say that the concerns was not, were not as broad. I think that we are doing a very good job, both at the school and the district level, as well as our board, in listening to the concerns our constituents have and addressing them. And these were also very time-oriented. And what I mean by that, so as you can see, one of the top concerns were late buses. And that was a very big theme at the beginning of the town halls, right? In September, when we were just starting school, we were doing some rerouting of buses. The same thing with the HVAC issues. As the temperature got cooler in the year, those were not as big of a concern. We did have school safety and teacher support regarding workload and special education was a common topic that we saw in all of our town halls. And so, we have worked with the Labor Management Committee, as well as with my teacher advisory council, to address some of the workload issues. Wendy Ivory and her team has, have been working incredibly hard to provide additional support and training to our teachers in our schools, especially around behavioral support. I am finishing up our support personnel advisory meetings. I have completed my teacher advisory committee meetings, and I'm almost finished with the student town halls. I will provide, over the course of the next board meetings, an update to you on each of those, so you have an idea of what the various groups have said and how they have impacted our work this year and what's happening next year. Next, and my final point, has to do with our awards for our board members around our reading initiative. And this time around, I have three certificates to present to our board members. The first one, and this is hilarious, because this person has been very vocal about not receiving awards, okay? But she's not here.
Oh, God! You have to fork if you're not here!
So, so the district with the biggest increase in participation and minutes logged for the week of March 3rd through the 9th is school board member Salamanca. She is not here to receive her award, so we will make sure that she gets it. Next, and I think we all know who this is, the highest achievement in minutes logged and percent participation goes to school board member Douglas, who continues to really shine in that area. And last, but certainly not least, the district with the highest participation during the week of March 24th through March 30th is school board member Farant. So, thank you all for your support of this very, it's been such a wonderful initiative that really started in Board Member Byrd's district, very small, and now it really has impacted our entire community. And so, we are very grateful. I think we have one more round of awards that will take place at our next board meeting. But it's been a lot of fun, and I am very thankful, as always, for your support. Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Make sure everybody gets their awards. Oh, my goodness. I have board members that have, that have buzzed in. Is that to speak on the superintendents? Not for later. Okay. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I remember a time that it was this bad. It was around 2007, 2008, and we literally thought the sky was falling because we were struggling as a state, like the dollars just weren't coming in as a state, and we were fearful that we were going to be cutting sports, we were going to be cutting arts. I think due to that, those couple of years was why we went out for the one mil, if I remember, so that we could protect the arts, we could protect some of the athletics and whatnot, because we didn't want to be in that position again, where as a board, you're making decisions on if you can have sports and arts in your middle schools, if you can keep sports in your high schools and arts in your high schools, those things that really fundamentally change the trajectory of a student. So it's unfortunate that we're here, because our revenues are strong. We are not a state that is concerned with dollars. We have plenty in reserve. They saved a lot of money from the federal government, the SRO dollars. They put a lot of those dollars in reserves. So the fact that we're having these conversations, in large part because they have to find the funds to afford vouchers. I mean, the IB, I mean, when I was up in Tallahassee, I was told the reason that we're looking at cutting the IB, the ACE, and all that funding is because vouchers have exploded to a larger amount than they anticipated. I don't know how that can be, because we had Arizona go before us, and we knew how large it was going to be, and we knew that 80% of it was going to be from students that never stepped foot in a public school. And we'd be subsidizing those students that were already in private school. And I say that supporting school choice. I support a parent's right to choose what is best for their child. I always have. But when it is such a detriment to public schools, that's upsetting. So, I am, like, we're looking at $37 million that we're going to get cut from the state. Then we have another $7.7 million just in Title II dollars. So that's, that's what? A lot of money. That's like 40, $44 million.7, right? Somewhere around in there. I know that the budgets went out. I've been receiving calls from teachers and staff that are very concerned and want, you know, are trying to understand why these cuts are so, so much. And it's due to declining enrollment. We have declining enrollment. We have, we're losing dollars, and we have to be thoughtful with the money that we do have and how we spend it. And I think in the coming months, as a board, we're going to have to have some very serious conversations about one-to-one laptops and the amount of money that costs the districts. We're going to have to have very serious conversations about our under-enrolled schools that cost us just as much money to run as do our over-enrolled schools. And we're going to have to look at repurposing some of those schools, and it's going to be hard conversations, and it's going to be heartbreaking conversations. But nonetheless, we're going to have to make them, because our strategic plan states that we will provide a high-quality education to every student in Orange County that attends one of our schools, and we can't do that when our resources are so thin that they can't take a class at a school. I was reading the book that Melissa gave us. It's a great book, by the way, by K. Bill, H. J. K. Bill. And in the book, he talks, he was a school board member, and don't ask me where, I forget. And his nephew came up and was complaining because they couldn't take an AP class. And he said, "What are you talking about? I'm a school board member. Every, every school's going to have AP classes. What do you mean you can't take the AP class?" And he said, "I can't take it because there's not enough students enrolled, so they won't offer it at my school." That's what's going to happen here in Orange County. Kids are going to want to take an AP class, and if it's not full enough, we're not going to be able to offer it, because we're not going, we won't have the return on the investment, or we won't have the dollars to do that. So I say all this not to frighten anybody, but the legislature is in session right now. Congress is up in DC right now. We need everybody out there to be calling your legislatures and telling them that we need to support funding for public education. We need to tell Congress to please not touch our Title II funding, that $7.7 million. That's 130 people here at OCPS, that we will not be able to fund without those dollars. And so, I don't want to be Chicken Little and say the sky is falling, but I do want everybody to understand that we're worried. The superintendent is worried. Rory, sitting back there, is, ahead of facilities, is worried. Doreen, we're worried, because we want to make sure we offer high-quality education, and it's going to get very ugly very quick if we don't, if this doesn't stabilize. So for those of you who love and care about public education, now is the time to be calling your legislators and your Congress and your senators and telling them to please preserve public education, so that we can continue to do what we do best, which is educate our students. And I do have a question, now that I'm off my rant. Is this going to, will this, does this involve SNAP or RCEP? Will this impact our CEP program for free meals?
At this time, and our team is monitoring it, there has not been any change. There's been conversations around the formula. We do know that there were impacts to Second Harvest, correct, Roberto? But right now, funding for our CEP is, is safe.
Today, for now. And a lot of these Title I dollars are forward funding. So for this school year, we're, we're moving along. It's for the next school year. Are we worried about the Title II dollars for the next school year, or is it the school year after that that we should be concerned?
Right. So I want to go back. So Title I dollars, for the most part, appear to not be in jeopardy, even though there may be some small cuts. We believe those dollars are going to be given in chunks like block grants to the states to be able to administer. Title II dollars, from what we heard for this, and we'll know in May, for this upcoming year are fine. It is the following year that we are looking at Title II and IV being eliminated, and what we heard is that there's nothing that's been allocated towards that.
Yeah, it's blank. Like, if you look at the, for those of you who are policy wonks, if you look at the continuing resolution, Title II and Title IV dollars are zeroed out. The money in the pot is there, but there is no money allocated to Title II and Title IV, which is why we're concerned that they won't, they won't be funded. So yeah, so I'm, I'm not looking forward to the conversations that we have, and I promise that the public's not going to be looking forward to the conversations that we're going to have to have regarding laptops, regarding schools, and regarding guardians, because those are the tough decisions we're going to have to make to ensure that we have the appropriate amount of resources for our students. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, may I? I need consensus from the board regarding the work session for our, the SROs. And so currently, where we are is that we have a contract for this year. Next year, what they have asked is that any increases to the Safe School dollars, and remember, we overspend by, is it 16 million, Doreen? Safe School dollars? We're overspending that by 16. And, but they, any new dollars. We had agreed that they would have, they would have that, and we went through some negotiations and landed on that. And then the third year, we were looking to recoup some with any new dollars. They wanted 60. I said, "No, we would, we would get 50." Now they're at 50/50. That would mean that for two years, we still would be in the hole. So I need consensus. Do you want me to sign the contract?
No.
Or do you want a work session for us to visit what other districts?
We need a work session. And I just want to say publicly how upset I am with those municipalities that are putting us in a situation where we even have to have this conversation. And I hope that every parent out there that does not want a guardian in their school reaches out to the municipalities, because I really feel like they're playing hardball, and they're putting us in a position that we don't want to be in, and quite frankly, that really ticks me off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just actually go into comment on a lot of what Angie said, but I'll go ahead and start with the SRO situation. First, I just want to express my sincere appreciation for those municipalities and law enforcement agencies that have worked with us from the very beginning of this negotiation period and have reached an agreement with us. And so, that's the City of Orlando, Orange County sheriffs, the historic town of Eatonville, and the City of Maitland. I'm just going to point out that most of those are in District 6, but thank you for doing the right thing for our students and for doing it from the beginning. I really, really appreciate that. And I would also just like to express my just extreme disappointment to the other municipalities and law enforcement agencies, Apopka, Acoe, Windermere, Winter Garden, and Winter Park, who we have not been able to reach an agreement with. And I understand that negotiation is, is a part of doing business sometimes. I would encourage them to remember that we are, we are public education. We are not just a business. We have extremely limited funds, and we don't have other revenues to generate, we don't have other avenues to generate revenue like they do. And it's extremely frustrating to me to know that their demands have increased since the negotiations have begun. So here we have the Federal Department of Education taking our money away, we have the state wanting to take money away, and these municipalities and law enforcement agencies have increased their demands on us, knowing why that has happened. There is no other way to characterize that than they are negotiating in bad faith with us. And I, I am so disappointed and so frustrated. And, you know, if you look at our data for the last four years, we have increased teachers' salaries by 14%. We have increased our SRO reimbursement by 44%. And, you know, I have a message to law enforcement agencies out there, and it's, "You're spending all this time fighting us for money." The people you should be fighting are the people who have the money. They're the people up in Tallahassee. They could choose to fund SROs directly, to protect the safety of our students, but they don't, because the reality is, they want to replace you with the guardian program. The majority of people in our legislature thinks that it is perfectly acceptable for an art teacher to have a gun, and that they are just as qualified as a law enforcement officer, having got an active shooter situation in our schools. They believe that our law enforcement officers are wholly replaceable. They believe that our law enforcement officers are wholly replaceable by people who are working in a completely different field and have completely different qualifications. So, so today, they're saying our law enforcement officers are replaceable in our schools. Well, do you think it's going to stop there? How else will the legislature usurp your power, commandeer your forces for their own political dirty work and replace you if, dare I say, they find it's more efficient to do so? So wake up. We don't want to replace you. We are on your side. We want you in our schools. We think that you are the best protector of our children and our communities. We believe in you and we want to stand with you. So please, just let us do that. That was just my first point. I also want to speak to the superintendent's comments about the pulling of the state funding for our advanced classes, for our AP, our IB, our ACE, our dual enrollment. We are estimated to lose with the proposed, with the proposed changes in the legislation in us, oh, blah, 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 can't even speak anymore. With the proposed changes, we are forecasted to lose $17 million, which will require us to cut some of these classes and opportunities for our students. So the legislature is telling us they can't afford to pay us $17 million. I just want to point out that the forecasted funding for vouchers for next year for Orange County, it's $285 million. So they're paying $285 million for vouchers, but they are saying they can't pay $17 million for our students to take these classes and participate in these programs. And these programs are important. They're popular with students, they're popular with families, they're a huge draw for our public schools. They offer students an opportunity to study at a higher level. They allow our students to be competitive when they're applying for college. They help families save money because students can get college credits while they're in, in public schools. And they help our students develop skills for the workforce through the KATE. And I think it's also important to note that Orange County Public Schools utilizes 100% of these funds. These aren't funds that we're saving for a rainy day, we're using for something else. The funds that are earmarked for these advanced classes and dual enrollment are being spent on those programs. So please, contact your legislators and let them know that these programs are important and that they need to be funded. And the third thing I just wanted to say with respect to the superintendent's report was, just again, to thank Orange County Sheriff and the City of Orlando for, again, just being such good partners and working with us on scooter safety. It is, despite everything that's happening, this is, this is one of the things that I hear a lot from my constituents, is just about the safety of our children. So thank you again, Orange County and City of Orlando, for being such great partners and for helping to keep our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vannos. Yes, Member Ferrant.
Thank you. So also wanted to touch on the Guardian program. I am completely supportive and have been since the beginning of being fiscally responsible. Looking at the Guardian program, I think our preferred would be SROs. But if people don't want to play nice and negotiate well, then we'll have to look at the Guardian program, which in my opinion is also a great program. I've spoken with school board members all over the state of Florida who currently have a Guardian program within their schools. So not school board members who are thinking about it, but actually have it in their schools. Not one is utilizing an art teacher or a teacher in general. I think that's a great way to, to scare people. But they're actually, every person that I spoke with, every school board member who uses a Guardian program, said all of their guardians are former law enforcement and former military. I would love to have anybody who's been in the military or in law enforcement protecting our kids. So I think it would be incredible to at least look at and see if that is a way that we can, you know, save on the budget. So if that's what we need to do and, and that's the way that we have to, to go because we don't have the funding, then that's it. Hopefully, we have people who can, you know, the, the different municipalities will be able to come to an agreement like the, the first ones did. But if not, Guardian program is just fine for me. I also think just, I think we'll really need to go through the budget. To me, this is like being in a family and you, you know, things are getting a little tight. You've got maybe a parent who loses a job and you've got to sit down and go, okay, what is necessary? What is, you know, what are we spending money on that is maybe frivolous? The air in here is so low, we all are freezing. We could raise that up a few notches. Maybe that would save us a little money. I'm just saying, things like that, that maybe would be, would that help? Little things like that. And I think we can look through and say, okay, let's look at everybody, have every department go through and say, are there things that we could do to eliminate some costs? Do we have to print out every paper? Can we just look at it on our computer? You know, different ways. And I think it is going to be, it's uncomfortable. I think in any situation, in a family situation, it's uncomfortable. In a business, it's uncomfortable. But you know what? We're all going to do great. This is, I think, you know, we can sit around and, and talk about, you know, how frustrating it might be. I think there is a decline in the FTE. We can blame it on vouchers. But honestly, I think the vouchers really are just showing that the money follows the child. We're either here because we support public education or we're here because we support children all over our state being educated. And for some, public education, that is the way that they're going to go. And for some, it's homeschool. For some, it's going to be private school. But the money should follow the child. That's, we're really here. I mean, personally, I'm here because I want to make sure every child receives an exceptional education. And so I want to focus here on what we have in, in Orange County. What can we do to make sure that our parents are wanting to come? You know, whether it's making sure that we, you know, looking at, maybe it isn't the one-to-one devices. We save money with that and we get them back to paper and pencil and getting them writing well. And parents go, wow, that's, okay, this is what we're, what we're looking for, what we're wanting. That's, when I talk to parents, that's something that they, they talk about. And so I think just, we're going to have to have some hard conversations coming up, but I think it's good. I think it's, sometimes we can get cushy when money gets rolling in nice and we can kind of get cushy and not realize how much excess we're spending. And so I think just kind of looking at, how can we retain jobs, but maybe lessen in other areas? But I look forward to those conversations.
Thank you, Member Douglas.
I just also wanted to say that I'm really disappointed about the stance that SROs are taking. And we are talking about the safety of all our children. And public school is where all the kids can come and have a great education. So, and also, your children also are part of these children in public schools. So we, we really ask that you reconsider, that you look again at what you're doing and make sure that our kids are safe in all our schools. And I really believe SROs are better than any other options. That's my, my stance on that. And concerning the e-bikes and mopeds, I just wanted to add that another layer of safety, we have, we cannot, we have no jurisdiction outside of Orange County Public School. But once the kids come to our schools and they enter the gate, I would ask, I would suggest that they actually get off their e-bikes and mopeds and walk to the racks, just to add that layer of safety for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Douglas. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. I do understand the conundrum that we're in as it relates to having funds for the protection of our students. But I will employ parents, family members, preachers, people who are listening to this broadcast, and I'm going to go back and have, talk to people, say, I need you to go back and look at this. You need to think about, what would you prefer in terms of protection? I was trained to become a teacher, and I got certified to become a teacher. And I renewed my certification, but every four years, every six years, whatever it is, I renewed, even as a board member, I renewed it. I personally would not want a person, leave responsibility of a person protecting my child who has not had the proper training of a police officer, simply because they have the ability to hold a gun or whatever. I would want someone who was certified to, to be in that position. And when we think about public dollars, as a parent, you have the right to educate your child how you feel seem fit. But my thing is, if you have chosen that way, why take away public dollars for public schools? And this whole idea with children going to school, having to make a decision, they can't take AP classes or IB classes because there's not money? That's not fair to them. Because as a public education venue, we should be able to offer to students what they need and what they desire. And money should not be the reason. And, and I believe that what you should do, you're going to have to go, as one of the board members said, talk to your legislators, whether you voted for them or not, it doesn't matter, they represent you. Go to them, go to Tallahassee, wherever you got to go. Because you need to understand, this thing is real. This is real. You need to take full responsibility of how your children are going to be treated, how they're going to be educated. They ain't got but 12 years. That's all we require. 12 years. And it goes by fast. Before you know it, those 12 years will have come and gone. And I, I, I'm just appalled. Thank God, District Five, they, they are doing what they need to do. The police officers, they, the SROs, thank, thank you, Jesus. Thank God for that. Listen, but you need to, you need to make some noise. You need to take a, a stance. You need to do what's necessary because it's not going to happen by osmosis and diffusion. It's not going to just fall out of the sky. No, 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 we're talking about real concerns and real situations and real dollars that are going to be cut, going to be cut. And you're going, as parents, as family members, pastors, whoever you are, you're going to have to rally up your troops and support, and put the support where you believe it should be. Because you can't pull blood out of turnip. You can't. I mean, how much you smash it, you can even, Dodge Red is not going to bring blood, it's going to bring what turnips bring, water. That's what's going to happen. And so, of course, I will, whatever the board decides, but I, I want it on record, I have some issue with just giving in to guardians. And it's not to say that there are not going to be people that are going to do the right thing, but I don't know that. I, I, I just have some concerns because police officers, they've taken an oath to protect and defend, even though we've had some issues, but hey, for the most part, there's an oath in place to protect and to serve. And I just think that, I, I'm just heartbroken and saddened that they were trying to put us in this position. Because if you don't have children, you were publicly educated. You went to a public school, maybe you went to private school, but there were funds then, you were protected. You should want the same for the children that are coming now. You should want the same. People who are certified. And our SROs, I mean, when I think about the money you're asking for in addition to what we're trying to do, and our teachers, seven and a half hours out of a day, they teach. And we, when we look at the salaries that you are requesting compared to what we are paying our teachers, what? No. Absolutely not. No. No. No.
Thank you. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that in the upcoming months, we're going to start discussing the budget. It'll probably, you know, closer to when the legislative session ends and we actually have a firm dollar amount on what we're going to be getting from the state. But when we start having those conversations, I would really love for the board to receive a list of everything that we overpay for. So for example, you just mentioned the SROs. We overspend by $16 million. We overspend what's in the mental health bucket. We overspend on the dollars that we receive in Medicaid. We overspend in transportation. Like I want to, I want all those areas that we overspend on given to the board, if that's possible. And then I'd like to discuss them at the budget work session. I think it's important for the public to know, because the FEFP is a complicated mechanism. It's not easily to understand and you can't look at the FEFP and apply it to the dollars spent in Orange County because of the categoricals and just the funding process. It's just, it's very complicated. But if we could kind of break it down into layman's terms and just say, here's our budget, here's what we spend, here's what we were given, here's what we spend, and kind of lay it out there, I think that would be helpful, not to, not just the board, but for the public to see that and hear that and understand why we're going to have to have conversations about guardians, why we're going to have to have conversations about repurposing schools and everything else that was listed up here today. I think that they need to know that we're having these conversations not because we want to, but because we're forced to.
Thank you, Member Gallo. And I was going to say the same thing, except I was going to ask for, and I know this afternoon we did get a letter about the latest advanced studies cuts, but if we could find out from all of the proposed cuts, exactly how much that is and if, and I believe that we need to get that sooner rather than later, because we want to do this before the legislation, legislative session is done, so we can have the public know these things in time to be able to reach out to our legislators. I think that, you know, not many people watch these board meetings necessarily. And so the only way that the public finds out about all of these things is if someone tells them. And nobody, they're not advertising this. None of the representatives are coming out of the, of the committee meetings going, "Look what we just passed. We're going to cut advanced studies programs." Nobody's admitting that, nobody's saying that out loud. So it's not getting, you know, put in the news and, and nobody's talking about it. But the only way it will get done is if we put it out there and we have to advocate for the things that we think are important and get the public behind it. Because the public and the voters are the only ones they're going to listen to. So if we can get them up there marching like they did for, when they started talking about cutting Bright Futures, and then they backtracked on that real quick when all the parents showed up at the Capitol, that's what we have to do for this as well. So I'd like to be able to see, you know, exactly what all these cuts, like what we got today for the advanced studies, how that will affect Orange County. I think sometimes also, I think that, you know, different legislators put out these different bills, and then sometimes they don't all communicate. And then when you see a list of, okay, this one's cutting this, this one's cutting that, this one's cutting this, and then you see them all together, you see the impact it has, you know, this is what's going to happen in our district if all of these go through. I think that's important to know and, and to let them know as well. I'm, would be grateful to hear the guardians' presentation. I'd like to know what other districts are doing. I've also heard of some districts have, you know, a police officer and a guardian instead of two police officers, any way like that that we can possibly save money, but still keep our law enforcement, that would be great. But yes, I think that we need to see, do that workshop for sure. And I think that was the last note I had on that. So with that, we're going to move on to the report from General Counsel.
I have a few items. I'll try to be more brief than what we just were. So we have got to the school impact fee advisory committee that's created by county ordinance in Chapter 23 of the county's Code of Ordinances. We have to do an impact fee study every four years. The impact fee advisory committee has The Impact Fee Advisory Committee has seven members, three of which are appointed by the school board. So, we need you all to provide any suggestions for folks that you think may have the expertise and the desire to serve on the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Obviously, we look at the impact fee to see whether or not it's giving us enough money to fund our new construction. And this has to be studied every four years, so this, every four years. So this is an important committee that we need to have representatives on. So if you all can get me suggestions of names, if you have it, that would be great. We, with respect to the Value Adjustment Board, we've gotten now our two citizen appointees. Then, thank you, Member Gallo, and thank you, Member Felder, for getting me citizen representatives. Appreciate that. We will have a formal vote on that on April 22nd. But with respect to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, any names you can get me, that would be fantastic. Second, last week, I sent you an email about the Religious Expression in Public Schools policy. There is State Statute 1,02.206 that says that the State Department of Education has to put out a model policy on religious expression in public schools. And the language of the statute also says that the department shall publish a model policy on its website. Each district school board shall adopt and implement the department's model policy. So normally, as you all know, we would go through a whole rulemaking process like we had earlier today, rule development, or a work session on the policy, a rule development workshop, and then final adoption. That takes approximately two to three months to go through that entire process. Under our policy BG, we're allowed to make technical changes and the board is authorized, General Counsel, to make a technical change in policy and avoid the entire rulemaking process by just bringing it directly to the board. I believe this is a technical change because under the, under the statute, we have no authority to deviate from the department's model policy. We have to adopt it and implement it fully. Now, just for the board's information, we have adopted 1,02.206. Since it's been adopted, we've been following that. We just haven't adopted the policy. So, under your policy, I'm required to bring this to your attention in a public meeting to get the board's consent that I can just bypass the entire rulemaking process and bring it next time as part of our non-consent. So I would like the board's consensus that I can do that. Okay. Thank you very much on that. And then finally, as you heard from one of our speakers in the pre-agenda portion, or the open public comment portion of our proceedings, on April 22nd, you all are going to have to decide book challenges on two books. I just wanted to alert you, I'm working through an analysis on the legal issues of these, of those statutes, just so you all have it about what's required as far as the law, when it says with respect to pornography, material that's harmful to minors, material that contains sexual conduct, all of that. I'm working that through and I'm going to get that to you all prior to the vote on April 22nd. It's a legal analysis. Obviously, you all are the public officials who can make decisions on whether or not you think something's appropriately on the shelf or not. But I was going to give you this memorandum to help you on the legal analysis. So be on the lookout for that in the next couple of weeks as you're doing your review of the books. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
See, that wasn't so long. You did good. We do have some board members that want to speak, though. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Palmerini. I've read one of my books. It was fabulous. So I wanted to say that, it was, it was a good book. This last, during over spring break, while some of us were lounging in the sun, some of us were. Dr. Vasquez goes, there was no lounging. We were in Tallahassee for the days in the legislature, and some of us from Tallahassee went to Atlanta for the COSBA conference. And so I just wanted to take a moment to share a little bit of information. We were able to, with the help of our very awesome in-house lobbyists. I think we met with the majority of our delegation. We spoke to them about the need for funding. We spoke to them about the charter school bill that's out there, that it's, it's like Parent Trigger 2.0, for those of you who were back in 2007 and '06 again, and we fought the Parent Trigger Bill. This one actually is worse. But I don't know, I don't know that it's going, I haven't looked at it lately, I don't know if it's going to be light of day. But we talked to them about that. We talked to them about start times. What we tried to do, instead of just saying, we want, we need, we need this, we need to do this, what we were trying to be very strategic is going in and tell them what we're doing well. Going in there and telling them that we know that times are hard, that times are challenging. We're looking at everything that we can do to be as efficient as possible, to use the dollars that we do have strategically and wisely. And I told them about some of the initiatives, like the affordable housing we were working on with our property. We recognize, you know, enrollment's declining. We're going to be having workshops about that decline in enrollment and how we can make sure that we still provide a high-quality education by not diluting our resources. And the purpose of those conversations was really just to say, we know what you know and we're working on it. So let us, let us, give us a chance to do our jobs before you start passing legislation that would inadvertently hurt us versus helping us. But it was, we, it was, we had a great time. Everybody was very sweet. We met with Europe Banksen, and he was, he's one of the ones on the sponsor of the book bill. And super nice guy. And when you talk to him, and he told you why he did it, like why he filed that bill, it made total sense. I don't know that he understands the ramifications of what might happen if implemented, but his heart's in the right place. Like, he has a really good heart. So I just want to share, we had great appointments and I'm thankful. Two Marquise, I kept telling him, it was like herd and cattle, and I wasn't lying. With this group, it was, it was like herd and cattle and we had to split up, but we were able to do it. We were also able to have a conversation with the president, Al Britton, and he shared some of his priorities and what he was looking to do. He's a very, very pragmatic and smart man. So we enjoyed that conversation. And then at COSBA, we had some great conversations and learned a lot of different things, what other districts were doing that we could apply here in Orange County. One thing that I loved, I don't know if I share with Bridget, but in one county, they use, they pay their students to tutor. So they will bus their students over to like, so like, for example, an East River would go over to Columbia, because it's right across the street. And they would bus them over to Columbia, and they would go there two to three times after school. They would pay the students. The students would have, they would do it after school, and they'd do it three times a day. And they called it the Pinky Promise. And this is super cute. The reason they called it the Pinky Promise is because after one of the first tutoring sessions with these young adults, these students, one of the students at the elementary school said, pinky promise that you'll come back. And they did a pinky promise. So they call it the Pinky Promise Project. And so it was really, it was really cute. But there was a lot of information, and I took lots of notes, and I'll be sharing it with Dr. Vasquez and the team on some really unique and great things that other districts across the country are doing. Because they're all in this, they're all in the same boat that we're in. Nobody's, you know, they're all having to kind of tighten the ship and make sure we're doing every, everything that we can strategically to continue to increase enrollment and ensure that our students are learning. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Ferrant?
I just wanted first to ask the question, like, what is the commitment level for the Impact Fee Committee? If I reach out to somebody and they're going to ask?
It's not a huge commitment of time, but it's probably going to be a couple, three, four days, or a couple hours apiece. So you're probably looking, I would say, less than 10 hours total.
Is it for an extended period of time? Is it like for the whole year, or is it?
Their work is limited over a few months. So it's not, it's not going to be a year's worth of time.
Okay. Perfect. So at least I have that information. And then this is school board member time to share, right? Yes? Or not quite?
Not quite. I was doing general counsel, any comments on his? We'll come right back to that. I was just going to, I had buzzed in just to ask if there were any restrictions, not restrictions, but guidelines, like there was with the advisory, as far as who can serve on this advisory committee?
No, it just says three persons appointed by the school board. It doesn't have any special qualifications.
Okay.
One of the names that, just to let you know, that we were looking at internally is Pat Knight, the chair of our COV committee that we thought would be an interesting person to serve on. He has the base of knowledge and would be knowledgeable on construction costs. So we thought that would be a good first step. So we're going to reach out to him. But I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay. I don't believe we have any, do we have any reports from any of our committees? I don't believe so. No. All right. Now we will take comments or questions or board, if there's any policy level issues you'd like to bring to a future meeting. So, Member Ferrant?
Awesome. Thank you. So just something I wanted to bring up, something that I've seen kind of happen over my time as a school board member, and then also as a mom. But when something happens at the school level, for instance, like a teacher is arrested, or maybe there's some incident happens within a classroom or at the school. In my own child's case, they had a, their coach passed away suddenly. But what I've seen is there's a blanketed, like, all-school call versus maybe doing two different calls. And so that's what I'd like to suggest, is that, for instance, in the case of the coach, it was, we found out along with everybody else at the school, who 95% of those students and parents had no idea who our awesome coach was. And I think having a personal call, whether it's like a live call, which that might be a little crazy if it's a bigger class. If it's a smaller group of kids, maybe that can be feasible. But something where it says, hey, parents, we wanted to call you. I know your, your, and your child is being coached currently by this coach, or we know that your child was in so-and-so's classroom. And so that's more on a personal level. Maybe you can give a little bit more details. I know that there's stuff with, when it's arrests. But when it's just sort of a blanketed phone call, it feels very business-like. And I know we're all wanting to be more personalized. And so I'd love to see if we can kind of change that model up.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. There are situations where we do multiple calls. Let's say that, let's take the incident where there may be an arrest. And sadly, we've had some experiences with that lately. There may be a call that goes out to just the class or the students that are impacted, and then there would be another call, depending on the breadth of the coverage, that may then go out to the entire school. So we, we absolutely can work with the schools on multiple messaging. But I do know that they try to do that on the situations where it's appropriate. I'm not sure we do it when there's someone that's passed away, but we'll relay that. Yes.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Are there any other concerns from board members? Okay. In that case, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.